Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The date is April 1st, 2024, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance? Thank you very much. Let me read our rules of civility and decorum to remind everyone. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comment shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individuals, any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, if you wish to speak at tonight's meeting, you shall complete a comment card for each agenda item that you want to address, which shall include the person's name, full name and address, and the number of agenda item. You will not be recognized if the comment card is not completed. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We do have, we did get word that Representative Silver is a bit delayed, so we may have to be flexible in that depending on when he gets here. All right. We do have a proclamation proclaiming the week of April 14th through 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Emergencies can occur at any time and require police, fire, and emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. The safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the West Palm Beach Emergency Communications Center. Telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. They are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Telecommunicators of the City of West Palm Beach have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. They exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Here to accept the proclamation is Assistant Chief Tamika West. Do you want to say a few words?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for acknowledging the hard work that our dispatchers do, our telecommunicators do. Once a week out of the year, they are recognized, but like I said, like you said, Mayor, should be 365 or 366 in this year, that they should be recognized, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will skip over Item 7 for now until we see Mr. Silver comes in. Item 8.1, City Commission approval is requested for the mayor's appointment of Peter L. Cruz, Ph.D., to the Downtown Development Authority for a term of three years to expire in June 30th, 2027. It is required that the City Commission confirms Dr. Cruz's appointment. So I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Mayor, I move approval of Dr. Peter L. Cruz.
Very good. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we have one public comment card.
We have a card?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Rafael Clemente.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thanks for approving this appointment to the DDA Board. As we all know, our downtown is becoming quite the big neighborhood, and having residential representation like Mr. Cruz on our board is vital to our mission. And just wanted to say a quick thank you. We're really looking forward to having him serve us as he has served the community for a long time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, now I will entertain a motion. We've already been, it's already been moved and seconded, right? See, you threw me off, Rafael. Thank you. Actually, I'm thrown off by Dr. Cruz. His haircut looks so great. All right, so there are no other comments. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, Dr. Cruz is approved unanimously. Thank you. City Commission approval was requested for the mayor's reappointment of Ms. Deborah G.R. Rang to the Planning Board for a term of three years to expire in February 4th, 2027. Ms. Rang has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and it is therefore required that the City Commission confirm her reappointment. So I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of a reappointment of Ms. Deborah Rang.
It's been moved and sec, is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll turn to the consent calendar, Commissioners. Items 9.1 through 9.4. Any comments, questions on consent items 9.1 through 9.4? Do we have any cards on any of the consent items? Okay. There are no comments or questions. I will certainly entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the agenda, excuse me, of the consent calendar as noted.
Very good. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.1, Resolution Number 53-24, authorizing and approving an interlocal agreement between the City and Palm Beach County to jointly provide housing assistance and supportive services to homeless individuals under the Pathway to Independence Program.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Kimberly Spence, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development, and this evening I am pleased to present Resolution 53-24 to you. In fiscal year '22, Palm Beach County Division of Human Services applied for the Continuum of Care Program competition, and this is a federal competition through HUD, which provides funding for homeless assistance and homeless services such as emergency shelter, transitional housing, rapid rehousing, and permanent supportive housing. The application included a project from, that would be implemented by the City of West Palm Beach. Specifically, the project is titled "The Pathways to Independence Program", and the county was successful in being awarded the funding through this application. Palm Beach County, as the grant recipient, is required to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city where we will serve as the project subrecipient in order to utilize the funding. So this resolution will authorize the mayor to execute this interlocal grant agreement. A little bit of background on the actual project. The proposed project was awarded for just over $482,000. It does require a match from the city, and we are able to meet that match requirement with an in-kind contribution of $120,530, which is being supported through staff time, which will be spent on program implementation. We have until November of this year to expend the funds, and the objective of the program is to assist up to 22 chronically homeless and medically fragile individuals who are unsheltered and have a desire to be housed. You do have the complete grant agreement as part of your packet, but just to outline some of the roles and responsibilities of each agency, Palm Beach County, as the grant recipient, will provide overall program oversight to ensure compliance with the federal program requirements. The county will also monitor the city to document compliance with the programmatic requirements and fiscal requirements. The county has to provide technical assistance as needed to the city, and so far, the Department of Community Services and their staff has been very instrumental in helping our city staff to develop the program guidelines for the Pathways to Independence Program. Because this is federal funding, an environmental review was required, and the county is responsible for ensuring compliance with all environmental review requirements. The City of West Palm Beach, through the Housing and Community Development Department, where services will be provided through the Eva Mac Community Hub, as I mentioned before, we are responsible for program implementation, and that will include conducting outreach to landlords and coordinating placement services for the participants in the program. The funding will be used to provide rental assistance, and that assistance can be provided for up to 24 months, and this will include the first and last month's rent as well as security deposits. Security deposits can exceed up to two months' rent, can be cover up to two months' rent, and the purpose of this is to incentivize landlords to participate and accept participants into their units. Along with the rental assistance and the financial assistance, the program will also provide case management and supportive services through clients, and this will look like, supportive services will include transportation such as bus passes, employment assistance, food assistance, anything the clients will need in order to be successful once they are placed into housing. Also, we have to, the city has to coordinate its services with all the homeless service providers that serve this area and also work with the county's Homeless and Housing Alliance. A little bit more on the program itself. To be eligible to participate, the participants must meet two primary criteria. One is that they must meet the definition of chronically homeless, and they must be identified within the city limits of West Palm Beach. And chronically homeless means that the client has to be 12 months of consecutive homelessness or four or more occasions totaling 12 months over a span of three years. Participants must also demonstrate that they are medically fragile, and they are able to do this by providing proof of disability such as social security income. This chart basically shows the flow from a client being unhoused to achieving permanent housing. As I mentioned before, the services will start with housing identification. There are a few different ways that our staff is achieving this. Palm Beach County provides a list under the Smart Landlord Housing Program where they recruit landlords to participate and to provide apartments that are affordably priced. The city also, through some of its existing housing programs, also maintains a landlord database and contacts with landlords, so we're able to pull from that list as well. And through community outreach, oftentimes we have landlords and property owners that come in and have units available and want to be able to assist residents in the community. As far as identifying the clients for the program, the city will be used in the county's coordinated entry system. So this program is not available to the general public. Coordinated entry is basically a wait-in list that is generated from the homeless outreach teams that go out into the streets to identify eligible clients. The persons on that list are prioritized based on the level of need, and so we are able to pull from that list clients that meet the criteria that I mentioned before for the Pathways to Independence Program. The third step is to pay the landlord for their services and for the housing. So as I mentioned before, the rental payments can provide rent, first, last, and security deposit. We can pay at 100% for up to three months, and this program is based on what's called a declining subsidy model, where over time, the intent is for the tenant to be able to take over the payment and manage the payment for themselves. So depending on need, depending on the case management and what the staff determines, the rent may be decreased over time. And then the other component of this, as I mentioned, is the case management and supportive services. So there'd be intensive wraparound services that's provided by staff or in partnership with existing housing providers that do provide supportive services. The program includes monthly home visits with the clients, progressive engagement, and of course, at the beginning of the program, the staff will establish an action plan and a budget for each client, and so each monthly check-in will follow up on those progress towards meeting the goals in the action plan. And the final step is program exit. So as I mentioned, the goal of this program is for participants to maintain housing without subsidy within 12 months of entering the program. If the participant is successful, they will be able to maintain that housing on their own. Participants that have received the maximum amount of assistance, which they can, we can provide assistance for up to 24 months. But if they receive the maximum amount of assistance, we've connected them with all the services and resources that we believe will meet their needs, and they're still unable to maintain housing, they will exit into, hopefully, a permanent supportive housing program through the county or will be able to partner with the housing authority to provide Section 8 vouchers for these clients. So staff recommends approval of Resolution 53-24. Again, this is a program that demonstrates the city's continued commitment to addressing homelessness through a collaborative approach with Palm Beach County and the other service providers in the area, and is meant to offer comprehensive support to individuals experiencing homelessness through housing assistance and supportive services. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
Thank you. And let me applaud you and your department for the collaborative spirit that was exhibited by going after this grant with the county. We all know that homelessness is a very perplexing problem, not only in our city, not only in our county, but certainly even in our nation. And so the more collaboration that can be exhibited between the different governmental entities and even the non-governmental entities, the better. So thank you again for the spirit of collaboration, and I fully, fully support this. Any questions, comments? President Warren, then Commissioner Lambert, then Commissioner Ward, and Commissioner Fox. Okay.
Thank you. I would also like to provide my sentiment on this and how important these interlocal agreements are and showing the relationship between the city, the county, and the community-based organizations, the front line of people that are addressing homelessness where it is. As a member of the Homeless Advisory Board for the county, it is imperative that we continue to work alongside of one another, and I'm looking forward to this and celebrating as we continue to reach milestones and make the progress that's needed to address this very important issue. Thank you very much for all that you've done.
We're excited to get started as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. I am excited by this because I think it offers a new tool for us in our toolbox because I know that every situation is vastly different from the next. And that leads me to my question, as I know that there are typically, well, there are many barriers, but in, when you were presenting this, I thought of two that really stood out. And the first is having access to housing. And I know that you mentioned the Smart Landlord Housing List. So the first part of my question is, maybe you can describe that housing list? And is it very robust? Is it very lean? How can we encourage more landlords to get on that list? And the second barrier that I see is, you know, I, having talked to our homelessness outreach team and some of the organizations in the community, we hear time and time again that sometimes it takes a while to get participants to be willing to enter a program like this. So I'm curious if you can talk about the individuals who might be, might receive quick benefit from this? I know that you mentioned that they'll be identified through some of our outreach providers. Those are my two questions.
So I don't have the exact number of landlords on the Smart Housing List, but that list has been around for several years. So there are certainly a substantial amount of landlords on the list that we are able to identify. Finding available units is still a challenge just because of the cost of the housing. So one of the components of this program is to look at not just independent housing, but also shared housing. And so we are working with clients and finding out upfront if they're willing to share an apartment with another client in the program or someone else in one of our other city programs to make that unit more affordable for them in the long run, once the subsidy expires. What was the second part of your question? Did I answer that?
Sure. And before I reiterate that, I just want to say thank you for looking into shared housing. I was working with some employed individuals who wanted to live together. They were two friends, and they were running into issues with the system and them not being able to share that. And so I think that that's really important, that we're looking at that. Thank you. The second question was about buy-in in the program and participation.
Yes. Yes, so the clients that are on the coordinated entry list, as I mentioned, are coming from downtown West Palm Beach and other areas in the city. Some of them have been on that list for, you know, quite a while, trying to get into other housing opportunities such as permanent supportive housing, which we know there are limited beds in those programs. And it's still a challenge with some of our clients that we work with to be prepare them to live on their own and to live independently in housing. But thus far, we have been able to identify clients that are ready to move into a unit, and I think there's enough on the list that we'll be able to move with, work with people and continue to work with them, even if they are not prepared to move into housing right away.
Well, thank you. I know it takes a lot of patience and a lot of compassion, and please express our thanks to your team.
I will. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. And you did answer some of my thoughts, and thanks, Commissioner Lambert. And I, while I, raising what I'm going to say because it may sound negative, I do commend this. I think this is great work. I think we have to chip at different sectors and make sure that we're doing something and being active and proactive. My concern is if there is that list of clients ready, willing, and able, because obviously they have to accept the services and move forward that way. So if we're thinking that our list is bigger than the amount that we're having, fantastic. I think that's amazing. My concern is when I've had communications with our homeless outreach and other organizations, that chronic nuisance are usually the ones that are permitted to be housed first and usually get the services first, where our ones who are on the brink of homelessness or new at homelessness potentially more susceptible to, you know, substance issues because they are trying to cope at night and other harmful issues that are happening. So I'm just, like, if we don't have enough on that list, are we able to have any wiggle room with that 12-month requirement of chronic homelessness? Or is that a standard that we must stick to?
The chronic homelessness definition is a HUD definition that we are required to meet. There are, there is some leeway in what is the definition itself in that it does allow for some periods of being housed. So it will, we'll have to look at each client to see if they meet that definition in order to participate in this program. However, as I mentioned before, we do have other programs that have less stringent criteria that are able to meet some of the needs of our clients. So we'll try our best to try to divert people into whichever program suits them best.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
With, you might have mentioned the timeline, and I apologize if you did. So, because obviously it does take work. You have to have the program before you make the promises. And so we're going to be out there trying to convince some of the people who may not want to accept services to accept those services that meet our criteria that are potentially on our list. Are we going to be running against a clock? How does that work? What's our deadlines?
So this particular grant has an expenditure deadline of November 30, 2024. It is a, the first round of funding under this grant. So there's a second round that is already approved, where we'll be able to continue to assist clients that are in this program with the second round of funding as well. And so that will be an additional year available of funding.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I think all my questions were answered, but thank you so much to your team for all the work you continue to do. Will you be able to give us an update on how the program is going? I guess if your deadline is November 24th, can we have an update at that point to hear how things are going and if you've been able to find the 22 and any other issues that you've had or successes?
Yes, of course. And we have been working, our department is working more closely with communications to get information out to residents and to commissioners as well about the objectives of our department and our successes. So this program will be included as part of that, but we're also happy to come back to talk about this program specifically and the accomplishments.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, no, I have a card. I have a card. Michael Cleveland.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, staff, audience. Michael Cleveland. Seemingly, this particular item, something similar that I mentioned years ago to you, Mayor. I'm surprised you agree with this, in which you told me that you would never support housing for the homeless, which was odd. Funny how things come full circle. My question would be, how is that you determine if these individuals have been out for a year or not? How would you keep a tally on them or something? Oh, you don't have to.
You don't, this is a comment period. You don't need to answer a question.
That's my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to address that, you can.
Sure. I can answer that. So as I mentioned, it's, all this information is stacked through the county's coordinated entry database. As clients are entered into the system, the county regularly, and our staff as well, has regular contact with most of the individuals on that list that are in West Palm Beach. So they are able to document homelessness through stays at the Lewis Center or, you know, services provided by other homeless providers to show that they have been unhoused for a year or more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Warren?
I'd just like to add to that as well, that I know that those agencies that the county funds, when they provide those services, when they provide assistance to the chronically unhoused, that it is recorded in their database, so that contributes to their ability to be able to track and trend that information so that they can provide further services.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 53-24.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, no, I'm sorry. We're going into quasi-judicial, so Commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures, please. And we will start with Commissioner Lambert.
Okay. Thank you. As to Item, Item 11.1 and 11.3, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. As to Items 11.2 and 11.4, I have had experte communications with the applicant and the applicant's representative. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Ward?
Do you want to amend?
I apologize. I may have the wrong numbers. May I fix that, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So 11.1 and 11.2, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. As to Items 11.3 and 11.4, which have to do with the Mercer Park Homes, I have had experte communications. I have not received written communication. I have not conducted an investigation. I have made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. As to Items 11.1, 11.3, and 11.4, I have not had experte communications. Have not received written communications. Have not conducted an investigation. Have not made a site visit. Have not received expert opinions. As to Item 11.2, I have had experte communications with the representative of the applicant. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Baduzy?
Thank you. As to Items 11.1, 11.3, 11.4, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to Item 11.2, I have had experte communications with the representative of the applicant. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Very good. Commissioner Fox?
As to Items 11.1...
As to items 11.1 and 11.2, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to item 11.3 and 11.4, I have had experte communications with the applicant. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. President Warren.
Mayor, as to items 11.1 through 11.4, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all communications be made part of the record.
Very good. Okay. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses on these items, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items 11.1 through 11.4, please stand and raise your right hand?
Right side.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Very good. Okay. We will go to item 11.1, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5092-24 designating Carl Riddle House, 432 Ardmore Road on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The applicant is here, but he doesn't wish to speak, but he's very excited about this project. This is a designation. This is ordinance number 5092-24 for 432 Ardmore Road. This is a designation for a property in the Sunshine Park Historic District. You can see it here. This house was moved here recently. It was previously in the downtown at 464 Fern Street. The request is for designation as a historic site, one building. It was built in 1925 and it's a Mediterranean revival building. And as you can see here, it's currently undergoing renovations. As part of this designation, the applicant is eligible also to take advantage of the ADVORM tax incentive program that the city offers. This is what the site will look like post-renovation. This is a historic building. It was constructed for Carl Riddle, the first city manager for the city of West Palm Beach in 1925. It was originally in the Hillcrest neighborhood at 1,000 Belmont Place and was designed by an associate of Edison Meisner, Lester Geisler. It was moved to the downtown of West Palm Beach in the 1990s as part of the Hillcrest Expansion Project and formerly served as the city's health clinic in more recent years. In 2023, it was moved to 432 Ardmore Road as part of a development that's going at 464 Fern. And one of the conditions that the Historic Preservation Board had for the move of this building to the new site was that it be redesignated in its new location. It does meet all codes and we are recommending approval of ordinance number 5092-24 with the following findings of fact. The subject building is historically an architecturally significant structure. It was constructed in 1925, which is more than 50 years ago. The Carl Riddle House is an excellent example of Mediterranean revival-style architecture. The subject building is identified with the Lamboon period in West Palm Beach, which took place from 1920 to 1928. The Carl Riddle House has a significant association with the lives of persons significant in the city's past and the loss of the subject building would be significant. We are recommending approval for this ordinance and scheduling second reading for April 15th, 2024. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Questions on this item? Comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify, when something is designated historic, then if we're moving it and we have to designate it again, the designation doesn't just travel with it?
Yeah, technically, the designations are tied to the parcels the buildings are on. So in situations where we do move buildings, we do have to redesignate them at the new site and then the former designation no longer holds.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I do have a card, but they do not want to speak. This is from Kent Wimmering, and he is in support of this item. Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I need to approve ordinance number... Move to approve ordinance number 5092-24 and first reading and schedule second reading for April 15th, 2024.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5092-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, designating 432 Ardmore Road as a historic site on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places, providing a conflict clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. I do see Representative Silver has come, so we will refer back to the beginning of our agenda and hear a presentation from him. Representative, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for being tardiness, the traffic...
Just don't blame it on traffic.
Sure, it wasn't traffic at all. My day ran late all day long, so I apologize. It was on me and traffic. Can I, do you mind if I close this, this computer, or do you need this open?
No, you should use that. Do we need somebody? You have a presentation?
No, I was just going to close it.
Oh, you can close it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and Commission. First off, I'd like to, there was only one Commissioner that was up for reelection and that was Commissioner Lambert. I just want to wish her congratulations on winning reelection. This is going to be my last year of presenting to you as your state representative. Just, I'm going to give you a quick lowdown of the budget and some policy that passed, but I just want to make this very clear to the mayor and the entire commission. It's been an absolute honor to represent you in Tallahassee. So thank you for your belief in me and letting me come here to give you legislative updates, year in and year out. And I'm usually late, year in and year out, so sorry about that. For our legislative update with regard to the budget, we had a record budget, again, of $117.5 billion, $49.4 coming from general revenue, $30.2 billion from state trust funds, and $37.9 billion from federal trust funds. Several appropriations that I was able to get in the budget this past session, $375,000 for Albert Family and Children's Services Mental Health First Aid right here in West Palm Beach, West Palm Beach Fire Department Contaminant Reduction Project, Palm Beach Zoo. Finally got a budget, well, actually, this is the third year I was able to get something for the Palm Beach Zoo. I'm really hoping it doesn't get vetoed like it did the first two times it did and the previous governor. Central Palm Beach County Infrastructure Improvements, over a million. West Gate right here in our backyard, CRA Enhanced Street Lighting and Safety Initiative, quarter million dollars. Almost $10 million for Palm Beach State, for Palm Beach State College, for the new library, to remodel the student library and media technology right here, right here in Palm Beach County. And several other child net parent engagement program of almost, oh, just over a half million dollars. In total, we were able to get almost $16 million in the budget. But this is not a me, me, me. This is a team effort. I had myself, I had my Senate sponsor. My Senate sponsor on most of these projects has been Senator Bobby Powell, who's been an amazing, amazing partner in all these years. So I'm going to miss him, I'm going to miss serving with him, but he'll be hopefully down here in the county level soon. So that was that. Before I go on to policy, does anybody have any questions on the budget, on any of the budget projects?
Not a question, but I do want to elaborate on a point that you made about the appropriation, particularly one you got for the firefighters and let the public know. Obviously, we're hoping that the governor will sign those, but you got us $116,000 and those funds will be used to purchase five gear extractors and two SCBA washers. But basically, those, that equipment allows firefighters to wash their gear and equipment after a fire or other contamination. And most importantly, it will reduce both short and long-term health hazards associated with wearing dirty and contaminated protective gear. Very important for our firefighters. So I truly appreciate your effort in helping us get that appropriation, sir.
Well, thank you. I made sure that was one of my priority projects.
Thank you.
I know it's not a lot of money. I would have loved to have been able to get more on the budget and I wish, I wish I could say I could, I would work on getting more next year, but unfortunately due to term limits, we can't do that. But it was, it was really incredible to be able to get that in the budget process.
Thank you.
Through, you know, budget conference and hopefully it makes it through the veto time, so. So thank you. I do want to speak, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the update. I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. I think it was one of the first ones that you mentioned was appropriation for mental health.
Yes.
Do you mind just sharing a little bit more about that? I know we just talked in depth about homelessness outreach program and services and the mental health component is, you know, absolutely necessary for us to be able to reach even more homeless individuals here in the community.
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner Lambert. As you may know, I've been focusing on mental health my eight years I've been in legislature. My sister, I'm going to get to this in one second, but my sister is a clinical psychologist, brought to me a story of a six-year-old boy who was Baker acted. He was sent for an involuntary medical evaluation in Duval County and he was, there was protocol to be followed for this student because he was an IEP student and protocol was not followed. When he had a behavioral health event at school, the parents were supposed to be contacted. Parents weren't contacted. Duval County Sheriff's arrived, were contacted. When they arrived, the school resource officer said, Baker acted him. We don't know what to do with him. Well, they did know what to do with the child. They just decided to not follow the protocols. And the child's parents were not contacted until the police, the sheriff's department were already taking the child to the facility and the child had been admitted to the facility. And you can't, under state law, you have to, you can be held there for three days, even if the parents didn't want the child there. So I've been focusing on mental health reform these last eight years. Of course, other education reform, criminal justice reform, financial exploitation reform I passed this year, but, or we, because like I said, you're working as a team here with the Senate, but mental health has become a passion of mine. And actually, I think this is my Albert Family Services, I think this is my fourth, third or fourth year that I've been able to get an appropriation, the project, an appropriation project for them because of what they provide for the community here in West Palm Beach. These, the funds go towards more professionals that can serve the community. And it doesn't matter your background, doesn't matter if you're homeless, you still can qualify to be able to get access to these services. I think it's extraordinarily important.
Thank you.
Of course. Anything else, or should I go to policy?
You go to policy.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now, Senate Bill 7016, which is the healthcare bill, otherwise known as Live Healthy, this is an omnibus healthcare bill that, this isn't my bill. This was just a piece of legislation that passed this past session and I think a lot of people should know about. It's a, mostly, it's a very good bill. It helps with much-needed Medicaid provider rates, Medicaid provider rate increases. But it could have been more effective, impactful, and fiscally responsible if it expanded Medicaid under the Affordable Care Act, but I don't want to get too detailed about that. Medicaid expansion would provide healthcare coverage for over almost a million people in our state and would bring approximately $4 billion of new federal funding to our state economy each year while freeing up state funds for other priorities. Now, I want to just mention that this was, is huge in terms of scope with numerous revisions to a wide range of existing healthcare policies and programs and the creation of several new initiatives. The primary areas of focus are increasing healthcare workforce, improving healthcare access and efficiency, and streamlining healthcare licensure requirements. It includes Medicaid provider rate increases for several, for several service provider types and expands the graduate medical education programs and medical tuition loan repayment program, which I believe, which I think will expand the access to medical education throughout our state. So if you want to learn more about it, I'm happy to, I'm sure you've got a very busy agenda today, but I'm happy to talk to you further about it. You have my contact information. Anybody here can get my contact information on the House website, but it's Senate Bill 7016. So I'd like to just wrap this up really quickly on a piece of legislation that I'm kind of proud about this past session. HB 951, Behavioral Health. This was a bill that unfortunately would not live on its own. I was able to pass it through the House, but my Senate sponsor wasn't able to get it heard in the Senate. So I did what I could and I worked with other members of the House and senators that had a moving mental health bill and got it attached as an amendment. It was important to me to get this piece of legislation on the books, partly because of my story that I mentioned to you before about that six-year-old boy back in 2016 that had been Baker acted. This bill would require when transporting a minor and the parent of or legal guardian of the minor is present or knows of that child being, before they're removed from that facility, school, the law enforcement officer shall provide the parent or legal guardian of the minor with the name, address, and contact information for the behavioral health facility within the designated receiving system, which the law enforcement officer is transporting the minor, subject to any safety or welfare concerns of the minor. The bill also establishes an office of children's behavioral health ombudsman, sorry, ombudsman within the Department of Children and Families for a specified purpose, provides responsibilities of the office, and requires DCF and managing entities to include information about and contact information for the office placed prominently on their websites and easily accessible webpages related to children and adolescent behavioral health services. I think this is extraordinarily important because when I explain this bill to people, they kind of look at me a little shocked that this isn't already in statute. This is now in statute. And it's something that, like I said, it's like, this is a team effort, but I'm really proud of this because hopefully this can help save a child from experiencing an extremely traumatic behavioral health evaluation that maybe they just don't need. So, thank you. I appreciate the time. I could talk for a long time because there was a lot of legislation, there was a lot of funding of a lot of different appropriation projects in this past session, but I'm here to be your soundboard. If you have any questions, please ring in.
Well, thank you again. Thank you for your eight years of service. Not sure what your next chapter is, but you will be missed in this capacity and we truly appreciate the partnership that we, we know we have an ally in Tallahassee when you were there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Ward?
Just a comment. I'm the newest on the dais and I appreciated all the communication out of your office, the silver sentinel. I always shared it with my resident group and so I appreciated that. I hope you know that it was read and it was, you know, shared with others and so thank you. I think that's the kind of communication we continue to need and you'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Lambert?
I just want to echo those sentiments and say thank you and especially for your firm advocacy of home rule and how important that is here in West Palm Beach. Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I have known you for a while, but right when I was sworn in, it was April of 2020 and I was the head of the Food and Water and Medicine Team for the city's COVID relief and I know that that was one of your, you were a strong advocate for making sure all of our neighbors had enough food and food distribution events were open and we partnered on many things at that time and I was new and looking very much to your office for help. And so I appreciate all that you've done for our city and for your continued efforts on our behalf. Thank you.
All right, sir. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your service. Thank you. Thank you. Now we will return to our regularly scheduled program. Item 11.2, public hearing of resolution number 66-24 regarding a request by Brian M. Seymour and Jack Rice Esquire of Gunstard on behalf of RDIMV Owner LLC for a major amendment to the Marina Commercial Marine Plan Development, CNPD, to modify the design guidelines for to modify the design guidelines for the CNPD at Section 11 landscaping and Section 13 signage. The landscape modification permits the installation of additional landscape, and the signage modification expands the signage allowance within PBAs Number 2 and Number 3.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of the Commission, Jack Rice with the Gunstard Law Firm. I have been previously sworn in. I'm joined this evening with John Lindgren, Gunstard's in-house planner, as well as Arter Pina, the Vice President of the Development for Related Group, is also here in the chambers with me this evening. We're here tonight for ICON's application to amend the Marina CNPD design guidelines for both enhanced landscaping as well as signage. On the screen in front of you, you'll see some background information related to the project overall. I won't go over the timelines, the staff report pretty adequately addresses it. But I do want to point out that this amendment is primarily related to the six-acre portion at the northernmost area of the actual CNPD. This is the area where the ICON buildings have currently been constructed. To provide additional detail, as you guys can see at PBA 1, 2, and 3, this is ICON's portion of the actual development itself. PBA 1 is currently developed with a small private club that's hidden from the street. PBA 2 and 3 are developed with two residential towers as well as a parking garage. That parking garage will come up in some discussions this evening. It does have an active use liner that kind of wraps around it. So what's going on? Well, as you can see from the illustrations above, if you look in the top left-hand corner, there's an inset from the actual design guidelines that stipulate what development within the CNPD will look like. They call for essentially a linear park out in front of the development with lots of enhanced landscaping. The intent, again, was to create kind of a linear park with a lot of improvements and increased shading to provide just an additional amenity for pedestrians within the community as well as the ICON building. Next, you'll see basically an image showing the same portion of the linear park from a different perspective. As you can see, TRG has been, done an awesome job of providing for landscaping in this area. This picture is a couple of months old, so the landscaping has only increased in terms of its coverage as well as its maturity and provided for additional shading and buffering in this area. Next, you'll see a rendering of the actual plan for ICON. There's 38 trees that are actually going along North Flagler Drive. TRG took it upon itself to install six mature oak trees beyond what's required along North Flagler. It's been great on the ground, and it just provides for an immense amount of coverage. But what we have found is when we went to install our sign, what we found was essentially that the landscaping has become so dense that you couldn't see the sign from the street. Additionally, when we sat down with staff and went kind of more in-depth within the design guidelines, we found that they did not allow for any signage whatsoever at this, the active use liners that wrap around the parking garage. Obviously, we want to see people, when they come in from the street, they want to know, we want them to know where they're going. But once they're on the site, we also want them to have an idea of where they're going and coming from. So what we're proposing is a signage amendment that really only applies to the ICON portion of the property. It's to allow that external sign band at the active use liners to have this signage that's 36 inches high along 60% of the width for the actual storefronts themselves. A building identity sign that's basically limited to the development that's shown from the street. That's what's shown on the bottom of the screen in front of you. As well as pedestrian blade signs. These are the signs in the top right-hand corner of the slide that really give pedestrians and people that are walking around on the site, or just traversing it in general, an idea of where they're going and an idea of what's in front of them, as well as, you know, they look behind them. Beyond that, we've clarified that vehicular use and parking directional signs can be included on the main sign for the building. Again, that's so if you pull into the property, you know, you see Building 444 is to your left, Building 4334 is to your right. This is to orient both pedestrians and vehicles that are going throughout the site. With regard to landscaping, all we've done is we've added language that does apply throughout the entire CNPD that states that landscaping in excess of the design guidelines minimum requirements is allowed. This creates, this allows for flexibility in the event that TRG wants to install, you know, marigolds in the summer or impatience in spring, just to accommodate planting and landscaping in excess of the minimum requirements. And that's basically it. The staff report did find that standards are satisfied with our amendment. We've received recommendations of approval from both the planning board as well as planning staff, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before we bring staff up? Okay, very good. Stand by, Mr. Rice. Staff?
Good evening. For the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. Mr. Rice covered the request very well, and there are no additional things for staff to add other than the staff as well as planning board did determine that the request meets all of the major amendment standards. And that backup is in both the resolution and the material in your agenda item. Are there any questions of staff?
Any questions of staff? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move to approve Resolution Number 66-24?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, do I, can I interrupt? Did I not have to say the application submitted factual, do I have to?
It's actually documented in the resolution as well, but you can certainly read into the record.
I don't need to read it. I just, it was on the paper, so I just want to make sure.
So we're fine?
Go ahead and read it into the record.
So now we got to vote again?
You do not have to vote again.
So I don't need to read it then?
It's in the resolution. The resolution that you approved does conclude the language.
Make your motion again. We're reading it, and then we'll second it and go through the process again. Okay.
I move approval of Resolution Number 66-24. I can't say 66. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now, these next two items are going to be part of the same presentation, correct?
Yes.
So I'm going to read them both into the record, then you can start your presentation. Item 11.3, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 12-24 Regarding a Request by Heather Danforth of Integrated Perspectives on behalf of Alexander Milan of Mercer Park Homes 2 LLC for approval of abandoning and vacating an approximately 0.083-acre portion of a platted alley-ride-of-way located north of Alpha Street between Mercer Avenue and Wilkins Avenue. Item 11.4, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 67-24 Regarding a Request by Heather Danforth of Integrated Perspectives on behalf of Alexander Milan of Mercer Park Homes 2 LLC for the approval of a special site plan review for an affordable housing project in accordance with Resolution Number 306-22 to construct two residential buildings with a total of 245 units located along the north and south side of Alpha Street, including variances and a waiver. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Heather Danforth from Integrated Perspectives. We were here a couple of months ago with the rezoning, and we're here with the same project moving forward with the alley abandonment and the special site plan review. Just kind of looking at the scope of the project, I just did the big picture right at the front. Just so you can see, there's the north building, there's the south building, there's street improvements. And not pictured here, there's also a park included in this project. So just going to quickly go through location. I think a lot of you have seen this before. This is located in the Jefferson Terminal District, which is about a mile north, south of downtown and north of the airport. So it's conveniently located, and it has great access. So when we start talking about multimodal pieces of this, we have access to Tri-Rail, Bright Rail. The circuit actually goes in this area. And the way that the neighborhood was laid out, it's actually walkable and bikeable. And there's actually a part of the Bike Master Plan has a piece going through this neighborhood as well. So kind of zooming into the JTD and looking at an aerial, the subject site is outlined in white. And Mercer Park, which was the owner and developer's first project, is just to the west of the subject site, number one, the star there. And then the subject site is three parts of three different blocks. And on the south side of the site is the district flats, which is a three- and four-story redevelopment project of apartments. And that leads over to the Grand View Market, which is restaurants and office buildings and retail. And also, we added on here the city site because there is a workforce housing component on here. And so, being able to have, you know, firefighters or utility workers coming and working, living here would be beneficial. The side note is that this is a receiving area for the downtown master plan for workforce housing. So just as it's been codified, that this is a place where we want workforce housing to exist. So I'm going to zoom in one more time, just to kind of understand a little bit closer about what the blocks are. And I'm going to orient you on Old Okeechobee Road in Mercer, on the top left of the picture. And then Mercer Park Apartments, which is the development we talked about before. And then the total north, south, and park blocks are 3.84 acres. And the north block is much larger at 2.27 acres. And the south block's a little bit smaller with 1.44 acres. And then that park block is the connection down to the district flats. Also, if you look at the zoning in this area, north of the subject site is commercial, west is industrial, and south and west is multifamily. So, there's two requests, so I'm going to go through the first request first, and then I'll do the second one next, okay? The first one is to vacate an alley. It's on the north block only. There's no alleys on the south block. And so, it's just on the north block only. It's about 300 feet by 12 feet wide. That's a picture of it now that it's all been cleaned up. It was a little bit overgrown before. But it doesn't connect to anything in the blocks north of us, or south, or east, or west. It's just a, it's one platted block that had alleys in it. And we've actually already abandoned one of the alleys on the northwest corner already. So, probably the reason why it was platted as an alley back when 1912, when this was platted, is Old Okeechobee went all the way through, and now it's cut off by 95. So it's a little bit different since then. And now we can unify the lots and make one nice, developable lot. So we find this consistent with a comprehensive plan, most specifically with the future land use element to promote infill development, especially east of 95. And then also, from the transportation element, this really supports multimodal transportation and transportation demand options, which we'll get into when we start talking about the site plan. But in addition, it also helps with crime prevention in the area. The area, the alley was really overgrown, and the north side still is a little bit. But, you know, I think that'll help because that way people can't hide back in the alleys, and people can have eyes on the street. Finally, we did do public notice on this, and we received no objections at all. So that's the first request. The second request is for a special site plan review. And so I just put the, I put the resolution in there because it's a little bit different than your major amendments and things like that. There's a different process and different standards. It's consistent with Resolution 306-22. So the city's incentivizing workforce housing, and in turn, there's density and height incentives. So first question, I think everyone was asking us, are we providing workforce housing? And yes, we are. We are providing workforce housing in both buildings at 100% AMI for 20 years. It's 25% of all of the units. It's 61-year workforce units. And we did the 30 units in one and 31 units in the other, and we worked with housing during this whole approval process. So kind of now going to the development, I did, we did like a generalized plan, just to make it a little bit easier at this level. The north building, the dark gray, is the building massing, so you can see that we're lining the garage. And the south building, the same thing. We're kind of lining the corner as much as we can, and then we have surface parking in the back. Both buildings will have amenity pieces, and then the park, again, is on the south side. These, we have the 61 units, and then again, we're improving the right-of-way with on-street parking, sidewalks, street raised sidewalks to kind of slow people down, and just kind of making the whole streetscape a better place. And then the public park, I'll talk about detail, too. Okay, so now I'm just going to talk specifically about the north block, and then specifically about the south block and the park block. So the north block is kind of, again, it's the bigger parcel. We're able to put structured parking in there, so it has more units. It has 184 units. And the idea of the design was more of a contemporary aesthetic to go along with Mercer Park. This one, we put our height, our eight stories, that was allowable, on the corner where Old Okeechobee in Mercer was, because that's relationship to the important intersection, and that is also the relationship to the commercial. So going with the resolution. And then we stepped down to the six stories on the side closest to the industrial. And so that way, we had a tiered height that will, it goes down even more on the south block to be sensitive to the multifamily. We also did an undulating facade, so it's not just all right up against the edge. And we tried to create it so there was balconies and a great amenity package. Also, this building does include workforce housing. So, in addition to the building itself, and we have all those streetscape improvements, but then we have a great amenity package that includes the walkout patios. Each building has a bike storage area in conjunction to the bike parking outside so that we can promote people walking and biking to downtown. This project, this building has an amenity package on top of the garage, too, so that there can be nice views. And then they have the outdoor gathering area, what I talked about. So the south block steps down further to four stories to be context-sensitive, and it has more of an industrial chic aesthetic. And this industrial chic aesthetic is playing off district flats. Kind of trying to bring the two together, and then the two buildings kind of play together also on Alpha. So that, this one has integrated art, unique signage, a cool perforated metal as balconies, and brick and concrete finishes. This one will also have workforce housing, and this one has, this one has parking at ground level. This one also has, around the building is the same street enhancements, including sidewalks, on-street parking. We also are doing lots of drainage enhancements in this area, which is definitely needed. And we'll have furnishings, and we'll have covered entry on both buildings, which is part of one of our waivers, and I'll talk about that more. And this one has the same thing. It has large covered patios, the bike storage. I like ground parking, so, as I said, convenient, because I like it. And then a lot of the amenities are integrated in the building. On this one, it's more of like they have co-working space, they have library, they have a cafe. So it's kind of a neat play on kind of what's happening in the area. So we have the north block, we have the south block, and then we have the park block. This picture doesn't show. It has a fence around it. It will be fenced. There'll be a gate on the corner. The owner will take care of the park and let it be publicly accessed during daylight hours. So it's going to be more of a passive park, so people can just come and relax. Because that was what the area really needed, was some more parks in the area. And it'll be lit, and it'll be, the tree in the center will be moved and replaced to that location. Okay, so I'm going to go through the standards review, because they are a little bit different than your normal amendments. I'll try to go through them, you know, pretty quickly. So the first one for the standards of review for the special site plan review is talking about traffic. So kind of talking from the beginning on where we're located, what we're doing, what's happening in the area. It's consistent with the city's transportation element, the vision on Number 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6. It encourages multimodal transportation just by its location, but then also by emphasizing bike facilities, the ride share. We have a ride share drop-off area, and then walking, and then providing walking from Mercer Park down to the district flats. It's like, it's a full sidewalk path now, so people will be safer. We have, we have obtained county traffic approval, and we provided a traffic study. And we are in the coastal residential exemption area, because this is where we decided we wanted our density for better access to transit. The physical site improvements, I've talked about, on-street parking, sidewalks, traffic calming. That's actually a raised platform, so that on Alpha, where the neighbor said that people were speeding too fast, we like raised it right there, so people would have to slow down. We have a ride share area that we're getting a waiver to be fully covered, so that it's nicer for people coming in and out, maybe getting rides to downtown. And also, it's interesting, because bringing the building to the front, we're reducing curb cuts. So that means less conflict points for both the walkers and the bikers, even especially on where our master plans included. So then the next one is form and scale. I talked about it before. We're on Mercer and Okeechobee in the JTD. This was considered a prominent corner. On that corner, there is another big commercial parcel, and we kind of feel like we're going to be playing off of that prominent corner there. And then we're stepping down from the commercial down to the industrial in our massing and our form and scale. And then we're transferring down even further to the four-story on the south building. Instead of just putting all of them at the same height, we're kind of trying to make it more interesting. And then, we kind of arranged the building so that now Alpha is going to be like this central, almost amenity street to the area. So the third standard review is compatibility of uses. So the zoning for this, these properties, and the future land use is all multifamily, so that's what we're providing is multifamily. We did not identify any historical sites, and I know that the city at one point did an analysis in the area and didn't identify any historical sites. There's no ecological studies sites. We did an arborist study, and we are moving one of the trees. And really, we're trying to do like a naturalistic amenity to the neighborhood with this park. So we think it would be beneficial as a whole. Setbacks and buffers. I think the main thing for setbacks and buffers is where we are adjacent on the south building to the residential next door. We've increased our setback to 16 and 19 feet. And that is also where the surface parking is, so there's either an increased setback or surface parking with increased landscape on that south piece. We're also including a privacy fence over there, and we've enlarged our trees over, adjacent to the residential. From the rest, we do have a minimum 10-foot landscape buffer next to all buildings and rightaways. And actually, it's a lot more, because we have undulating facades. And all of our setbacks are consistent with redevelopment in the area. Like all the Mercer Park and all that, they're about 10 feet back. So, we're number five. Okay, is the land area sufficient? Yes, definitely, because we have generous units. We did a comparison to other, even the Mercer Park one, looking at our own projects. We, our units are going to be generous compared to others in the area. And we did a little kind of analysis on the top right. You guys can look through that. We have ample parking. We are asking for a waiver for parking, but we're way over what the Institute of Transportation Engineers is asking. And plus, in addition to having ample parking, we have different types of parking, and we have bike parking rooms, which is exceptional. Again, we talked about our amenity packages. I mean, each building is going to be above or beyond most other projects in the area, and we're expecting them to be very successful. The last piece is workforce housing. We're going to do a one- and two-bedroom mix consistent with what each of the buildings have. We're gonna do a one and two-bedroom mix, consistent with what each of the buildings have. And Lorna said before, twenty-five percent of all the units is gonna be workforce. Okay, four waivers. Okay, we're requesting four waivers as a part of this. The first one is the right-of-way landscape buffer waiver. So we have one specific situation on Longwood, where the surface, surface parking backs up to Longwood. There's a fence there and it's seven feet from there to the fence. There's another two feet on the other side of the fence. But we're requesting a waiver for three feet for the landscape, but we have more landscape there than we generally need. Well, we meet all the landscape requirements, we have enough open space for it there. And then I didn't show a picture of the other side, but the rest of it is all exceeding what that ten-foot is. So overall, we're providing more landscape than what, what's needed. It was just this special situation that we had on the backside. Waiver number two is for the setbacks. And this is related to bringing the building up to the front. So we moved our buildings up to address the street, so the front setback is the greatest. Because the way the code reads now is that it really makes it more like you put your parking in the front. And then the other setbacks are just, again, related to just bringing the building up to the front. And again, this is exactly what we did over Mercer Park one and district flats. Waiver number three is what we had talked about before, the awnings. And you can see in the picture on the right, the, the black awning over, over on the building. Basically, that's the, the ride-share drop-off. And what we wanna do is we wanna extend it over just to make it covered, just to make it more comfortable. So we just get a waiver from the code, so we can pull it out a little bit. And the last one is the parking waiver, we're asking for twenty spaces. Again, exceeds ITE by a hundred and thirty-nine spaces. And we do have the on-street parking and we have access to circuit, bike rooms, drop-off area, sidewalks. So there's definitely, hopefully, gonna be a mix of, of transportation uses in the area. Finally, we did do numerous public outreach pieces. We did have a public meeting, which we talked about before. We had fourteen attendees and we have followed up with many people. And then we also have one-on-one outreach. We have letters of support from fifty-six parcel owners in the area. And those are not just downtown and Grandview people, those are JTD people. So everybody, most people are in support. We did try to work with everybody to make sure that we're doing the best and being the best neighbors that we can. So with that, I'm here for any questions. We also have our development team here, and we have our architect, and also we have our transportation engineer.
Very good, thank you for the presentation. Any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Okay, staff, what say ye?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Valentina Broglia, Planner. Heather did a really good job at covering everything. I did just wanna add that the alley abandonment appraisal is two hundred, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, which was paid last week to the city. And staff is recommending approval of Resolution twelve twenty-four for the alley abandonment and Resolution number sixty-seven twenty-four for the site plan visit, for the special site plan review. It does meet with all of the standards within Resolution three oh six twenty-two and the site plan standards as well on, in the zoning code of ninety-four thirty-five. And as Heather mentioned, the south building is on a lower scale, which they could've gone much higher with the Resolution three oh six twenty-two.
Good, very good.
Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, we do have some cards. Louis Murillo and Jeremy Schmidt. Start making your way toward the podium, please. Louis Murillo.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak here tonight. My name is Louis Murillo, I live in twelve ninety Alpha Street, which is the corner of Mercer and Alpha Street. The reason why I'm here tonight is because of safety concerns. Since I live in the corner of Mercer and Alpha Street, I've noticed that there's a, a lot of vehicles going at a very high speed. Also, just two weeks ago, there was a pretty bad wreck on Okeechobee Road and Mercer Avenue. Okay, one of the ladies in one of the vehicles had to be assisted, trying to get out of her vehicle. In addition to that, I've seen three other accidents, which have been pretty bad. I mean, the front ends of these vehicles are completely gone. One of them actually flipped, flipped upside down. Locally so far, there has not been any fatal accidents, but it's only a matter of time until something fatal is going to occur. I think Mercer Avenue has been ignored. I never seen any police around there. Cars always speeding constantly. So we need, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it would be a good idea to have some sort of traffic light, speed bumps, additional signals, extend the bicycle lanes. Anything else that could, that could help to prevent any fatal accidents from happening at these intersections. In addition to that, there is also a lot of traffic going through Alpha Street. There's also a lot of speeding going on Alpha Street. And talking to Alex, the developer, he's done a pretty good job so far with the site plan. I have reviewed the site plan, I'm also an architect. And I welcome the speed bump that is gonna be in place across Alpha Street. So that is going to help some of the speeders coming down Alpha Street. What happens on Alpha Street is that it's a residential area, right? And a couple of my neighbors have lost pets because of high-speed vehicles. There's also little kids now in the area as well. So we have a lot of vehicles that come through there, including commercial vehicles. We have Chi-Hans, a towing company, and they come through there twenty-four-seven. These are very large vehicles. Trying to stop one of those vehicles, if a child is coming across, it's gonna be very difficult. Regardless of the speed bump, I think that, that the law has to be enforced. There is no need for these type of vehicles to go through a residential area. Ironically, Chi-Hans is adjacent to Okeechobee Road. And I don't see why these vehicles cannot go down Okeechobee Road and make a right on Mercer Avenue to go north. Or to go straight down Wilkins Avenue to go south. Seems that Alpha Street is going around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Jeremy Schmidt.
Mayor, Commissioners. I'm a property, Jeremy William Schmidt, for the record. Property owner at Longwood Street in the neighborhood. I just wanna present my support for the project. The developers have a track record, this is their second time doing it, of doing what they say they're gonna do, including their thoughtful design and infrastructure improvements for the neighborhood. So I'm in support of the project, thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a card from someone who did not want to speak on item eleven point four, but they did want their comments read. James Cazaro, I am in favor of this project. Okay, those are all the cards. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, I was wondering if the applicant, did you say that you had a traffic engineer that was looking at this project or that was here tonight? I just wanted to, to talk a little bit about the concerns that I just heard and if there's anything that you've looked at that might be able to mitigate some of these issues with the street safety. I know that obviously you'll just be moving in, but if these are already issues that are happening in the neighborhood, then adding more cars and more traffic to the neighborhood, obviously, I wanna make sure that we're looking at plans to mitigate some of this.
Sure, and for the record, it's, excuse me, Brian Kelly, traffic engineer with Simmons and White. And I, I think Heather kind of touched on some of them, but I do wanna go into detail on it a little bit more about that. That speed table, pedestrian crosswalk, that's really a nice amenity, so that speed table's gonna be on Alpha. So that kind of does two things. Number one, it slows traffic down, because it's a form of traffic calming, where you have a raised crosswalk. Also enhances pedestrian safety by the pedestrian actually being a few inches taller, it creates better visibility for motorists, for, for the pedestrians to see people. So that's very beneficial. Also, what we're doing on, that whole road is essentially Alpha, right in front of the property, is gonna be reconstructed, it'll resurface, have new asphalt. And we're also adding some on-street parking. And one of the things with traffic and speeding is people tend to drive how comfortable they feel. And so when you have off-street parking, what you, or excuse me, when you have on-street parking, what that happens, it creates a little bit of friction, where you see those cars on the road and it naturally kind of causes you to slow down. So really, the combination of that on-street parking, the new road, and the speed table certainly are all factors that will help reduce that speeding concern.
Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, I will entertain motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number twelve dash twenty-four. The motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, and the findings that the public welfare will be best served by approval of the request based on review and consideration of the criteria found in Section seventy-eight dash two seventeen of the city's code ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing on all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Commissioner Fox.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number sixty-seven dash twenty-four. The motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, and the findings that the request, subject to the conditions set forth in the resolution, complies with the interim standards established in Resolution number three oh six dash twenty-two.
Second.
They're moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Now we will turn to comments from the public. We have a few cards here. Michael Cleveland, Fiona Rawls, and Tawana Teal. Mr. Cleveland.
Good evening again, Michael Cleveland, Mayor, Commissioner's Staff. I'm not sure where that young man is from, but any cars parked on the street where I live, doesn't slow down nothing. I always been opposed of sitting voting officials campaigning for other voting officials. To me, there's a hidden promise there somewhere. You guys think it's unethical, I think just the opposite. Somebody's in debt to somebody. Bright line. On all public safety, particularly speeding ones, there's a, a monitor, a warning that comes out, announcement, train is approaching or whatever. But that's not on, on bright lines, man. A train of that speed should have some kind of warning verbal, or a bell, or whistle, or something, just knock the gate. For those pedestrians or other people, should say, train is approaching in two minutes or whatever one second. I think that's important. I made a suggestion sometime before, I'm not sure if they listen to me, but it's working. The other thing I'm gonna talk about is PSC. Most of the time in this chamber, everyone requires respect. I do too. Now, I've asked, ever since there been PSC, P, whatever it's called, security, for it being Pleasant City. Two months ago, on the agenda, or six weeks ago, on the agenda, it listed Pleasant City first, asking for it, and you agreed. How many times I've asked for that, Mayor? You know, Mayor, I have to be honest with you. My mom told me to never discuss my people or other people in the public, but sometimes I'm just tempted, Lord help me, I'm tempted. I don't appreciate it, but it's okay, I can get over it. But PSC should always, any other security, should always be in the Pleasant City area. The other comment I wanted to make right quick was housing. The governor, if the governor have his way, according to Billy's sign, you're gonna have to pay for people to stay after November in housing anyway. So that's come around, be in full circle. But thank you for your time, I hope everybody got some eggs for Easter, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Fiona Rawls.
Thank you, Mayor James, Fiona Rawls, on three nine five twenty-seventh Street. Now, I know traffic is a big problem, so I, I hear the biggest congestion is moving east to west. I think it's when the bridges go up. And I think this is an opportunity for our new electric bike, bike cops, to really take charge of that situation during the peak hours, when the bridges are in operations. I think it would alleviate a lot of that. The other thing I was gonna say is, really, the traffic, it's just moving from north-south is really that Tamarid. When you're trying to go up Tamarid to get out of downtown, it's just, it turns into a bunch of streets. So I was gonna say Broadway, at thirty-two seventeen Broadway, Commissioner Warren. You know, the whole Broadway corridor is looking really nice lately, but this one property, they just have thirty-two seventeen spray painted on a white fence and it's just an opportunity. Now, I wanted to see Commissioner Lambert win by just one vote, but that's 'cause I'm a dreamer. Seventy-two percent, I believe the term is a shellac-in. Is that right? I'm not sure. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Tawana Teal.
Hello, everyone, I am Tawana Teal, so great to see you guys again. So I am here on behalf of, as one of the leaders of the Historic Northwest Residence in Action. And I just wanted to speak about our basic quality of needs in regards to trimming back the trees in front of our stop signs. Us as residents, continually, we have to go through the neighborhood and just send pictures. We know about resident, what is it, the key app, but that's time-consuming. And we just feel like, you know, either public works, property works, whoever it is, just trim our trees in the neighborhood if possible. Second, there's been a lot of speeding. We're working with Commissioner Fox, as well as Chris with the CRA in regards to stop signs. On Eighth, Ninth, and Henrietta, in front of the sunset, there is side parking, so you can't really see who's coming. There has been several kids about to get hit near the sunset, because they are speeding. So it's not true that when you see cars parked on the side, they slow down, they don't. Also, we wanted to also express the Powell Center. If you guys can allocate funds to pour into the police department, or whomever it is, to bring a director, that was the kids' safe haven for our neighborhood. Right now, they're walking around our streets with nothing to do. So a lot of them don't have parents such as me, or caring parents maybe to go home to, or even just, you know, a safe home to go to. We don't know what their story is, but I do know for myself, Powell Center was some place they can go and just, you know, be themselves, be a kid, play basketball, and be there all night long until the staff would take them home. So just please put the Powell Center at the forefront of your agenda. Crosswalks on the busy street of Division, between Sixth and Division, we're requesting possibly any crosswalks that we can put all the way up, because Seventh Street is very busy, being that that is our one way right now for traffic. Going all the way up to U.B. Kinsey, possibly that we can get painted crosswalks for the kids, and maybe some flashing lights on the stop signs, so that people can slow down, because we've requested speed bumps and we haven't gotten them. So that's all I needed to say, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. If you could meet with Mr. Fawn in the back, Armando, make sure you get a list of all that, and we will follow up. You are, you are Jose Luis. Crystal Phillips.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the time today. My name is Crystal Phillips from Fifth Street. I am also a representative of the Great Historic Northwest, Neighborhood and Residence in Action. Just to piggyback off of my fellow Tawana Teal, I wanted to also bring up that we have been asking for the corner of Bannion and Third Street. Those roads have not been defined since the grant has been put in place and it has caused some confusion with traffic lines. We're requesting that public works, so whoever's responsible can make sure that, that area is painted, or if the neighbors have to do it, we can get the material. But we are concerned, because there has been some traffic issues on that end. And then for myself and us, we would like to also thank Commissioner Fox for stepping up to the plate. You have been doing a tremendous job, a great job, that when we reach out to you, you come forward, you show up at our meetings, even when we don't ask you to, but we thank you. And one of the things that I'm especially excited about, Mayor, is the pilot program for the patrolling police officers in our neighborhood. I believe they've been doing it now for, I think, over about a couple of weeks. And us as residents, we understand that it is just a pilot program, that they're doing it on their overtime. But it is something that our neighborhood really does need, to see the police officers that are present, that drug activity can go down, looting can go down. We've already heard from our fellow neighbors stating that they do see them. So I hope it's a pilot program, but I really would hope that you guys take into consideration that it is something that is greatly needed in that area. And if you can allocate funds to make it happen long-term, that would be to make it happen long-term, that would be tremendous for us because that's something that we've been asking for, for a long, long time. But I really want to thank you for putting that out there. And Commissioner Lambert, great job on your win. And also, I just want to thank you guys that when we do call, you guys do show up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And Sergeant Patterson, he has been doing a tremendous job, that when we call, text, those guys show up. So we wanted to let you guys know that the money is being well-spent. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, those are all the cards that we have. So let's hear comments from members of the dais, and we'll start with you, President Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge that April is recognized as National Stress Awareness Month, and to bring attention to negative impacts of stress. Managing stress is an essential component of a healthy lifestyle. Knowing how to manage stress can improve mental and physical well-being. I, and I believe my colleagues, do recognize the city's employees and their total well-being, and how important it is for them and their families to have a vibrant lifestyle and the things that they contribute to the city of West Palm Beach. And kudos to our human resources team, particularly Chelsea McGee, for offering a variety of city-fit stress management activities for the entire month of April. And those activities are for our employees, and they're free to participate in, and it includes meditation practices, Pilates, journaling, and additional items. Stress is unavoidable, and it is important to learn different coping mechanisms that suit their lifestyles best. And again, we recognize the total well-being of our employees, and again, what they contribute to the vibrancy of our community. Congratulations to Commissioner Lambert on your reelection. And congratulations to Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Fox for your uncontested bids for being elected for city commission. So thank you for your commitment and your desire to serve our city.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I wanted to just mention a few things that I heard. Thank you to everyone who came to speak tonight. Fiona, I wanted to mention to you that the Coast Guard is actually the one responsible for the bridges. And I know that it's been many years in the works that we've been trying to work with them to either not have so many openings and closings during rush hour or something. I know that there's a pilot program going on, not Okeechobee, but on the other bridge, and we will continue to work on that. I know that the county is working on it as well, but if we have any other updates on that, I'll keep you posted. Thank you to the Historic Northwest team for coming tonight. I did have a few updates for you as well. One of the issues that we see in Historic Northwest is that some of the streets, there will be four ways, but there's only two stop signs. And so it's not just the three blocks that you've been talking about, but I know that those are really important. But Chris and I spoke about it earlier today. We're trying to get more four-way stops in other areas, not just those blocks. But I think there's, not some issues, but I think with engineering, you know, there's a process on things. So I'm mentioning it here tonight in case the mayor or the city administrator can help push that through in any way. I mean, I know that in some areas where there's not already a stop sign, there's more of a process to get a new stop sign. So it is, we have heard you, and I completely agree with you, because when I drive over there, sometimes you don't, some people are stopping, some people aren't stopping, some think there's a four-way stop, but there's not. And so anyway, I appreciate you continuing to talk about that, and hopefully we can have some progress. The PAL Center, I know that it is top of mind for all of us, and the city administrator has been working on it. I don't have, know if there's an update right now, but I, there is something in the works and discussions ongoing, so we'll keep you posted on that. I did also want to mention, we are in the final weeks of the green market for this season, and this week will be the Master Chef Showcase on April 6th, and the final green market will be on April 20th. We have received a fourth nomination, four years in a row, to be the best farmers market in the U.S. So you can go onto our website, the city's website, and be able to vote every single day for the next three weeks. And that's all I have. Oh, congratulations to Commissioner Lambert. I'm sorry, how could I forget? And our swearing-in will be April 11th at 5:00 p.m., should anyone want to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. I want to start my comments by saying thank you to everyone who came out and voted. It is an honor to be able to serve our city for a fourth term here, and I've said this a few times already, and I'll probably say it a few more times. I don't see this as just reelection for myself, but also a testament to the work that we're doing here on the dais. Mayor, your administration, I think that it says that we're moving in the right direction, and I really am proud to be working on many of the things that we address today, as well as those that we continue to. And as has been a phrase in my family for many years, and on the, throughout the election, which is, we can always do better. And so I know we've heard a few comments tonight about speeding, and, you know, that is something that I consistently hear from residents, is a lot of speeding issues. And I want to say thank you to our police department. I know that they're, you know, taking a strategic look at how they can provide more enforcement. Our engineering department is looking at more ways to engineer the roads to reduce speeding, and, you know, continue to look forward to working with the city's administration on education of how we can just help to better inform residents, and, you know, just continue tackling this from all aspects. Speaking of the police, I want to mention that we have the 8th Annual Run With The Cops, not Run From The Cops. It's on Sunday, April 14th at 7:30 a.m. I think that there was some effort to have a team of all of us up here on the dais, and I'd be happy to design shirts again for us, like we did for the firefighters event, for anybody who might like to participate. But I know it's always a fun time, and it's on Flagler Drive this year. So thank you so much. And just to, also to reiterate what Commissioner Fox said, please join us on Thursday, April 11th at 5:00 p.m. for our swearing-in. Thank you.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to also take this opportunity to congratulate my colleagues on their uncontested reelections, both Commissioners Ward and Commissioner Fox, and obviously to you, Commissioner Lambert, on your big win. I really agree with you that it is a testament to the work that everyone is doing up here, whether it be an uncontested win or a contested big win that Commissioner Lambert had. I think we're definitely on the right track, and we're trying to do what is best for the people of West Palm Beach. So thank you, and congratulations on your reelections. I'd like to also just take a moment to remember a friend of mine who passed away just recently, Bob Jaeger's. Bob and I were in Rotary together. I think Bob was, been in Rotary for over 30 years. He was a true gentleman and dedicated his life to public service. He spent 31 years as a prosecutor with the Palm Beach County State Attorney's Office. His entire career after he left the military was spent, you know, trying to protect the people of Palm Beach County. And it's so unfortunate that he met, you know, an untimely end, as he did. But, you know, his spirit is here with us, and my condolences to the Jaeger's family, and you will certainly be remembered for the, for being the great public servant that you were. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, and congrats to Commissioner Lambert, and then obviously to Commissioner Fox. I look forward to another two years working with all of you. It's been a pleasure so far, and we'll keep it moving. I want to circle back on just the comment on PAL. Obviously, I know that it is a work in progress, but until that time, if you do know a family, I know it's not necessarily right directly in the neighborhood, but there is a Boys' and Girls' Club in the North End. And so if there is someone who is looking for aftercare, please have them reach out. They're a great program. They're in Pinewood Park neighborhood. Like I said, it's not as convenient as PAL, but at least it's an option for now until we figure out how to reinvigorate PAL itself. And as far as the tree trimming, it's something that has been brought up a few times in my neighborhood meetings as well. Some of my older residents have talked about how there used to be a tree trimming division, and I know we have a couple tree trimmers. But I know, working with, you know, like from North Shore, and recently worked with the city to get more trees planted within the swales to promote shade and to promote walkability, and some of their streets are being upped and upgraded. We are going to be pushing planting of trees, and these swales and things like that. I feel like we maybe should be more proactive on figuring out how, because we're not a whole big association, in our private association, how we can help our residents trim these trees and make sure that they're not overgrowing. And so I just, given that we are heading into budget season hard, not to add on to your ever-growing list, Minister Johnson, but I just think, I've been hearing it over and over again. Echo Lakes, they've continuously, and that's my older neighborhood, and they've talked about that program. So it is something I'm hearing over and over again, and maybe we should try to look at it, or even outsourcing it and have some sort of program. Our police meeting is next Wednesday on the 10th at 6:30 at Gaines Park. We also have a couple community events. Pleasant City First Neighborhood Association is having their Pleasant City Day on Saturday, April 27th, from 10 to 5. And you can contact my office for information, or contact pleasantcityfirst@gmail.com. And they're having that in Blum Park. And then sooner this Saturday is Pine Wood Park Community Day, hosted by Pine Wood Park Neighborhood Association and CTSO Let's Help, Inc. They're having their 30th annual community day, and that's at 4105 Pine Wood Ave. The Saturday, the 6th, from 1 to 4, and there's going to be fun activities for young and older residents throughout that period of time. And I wanted to mention, sorry, oh, the Gaines Park Community Center groundbreaking is happening on Friday, April 5th at 10 a.m. We're very excited about that, and the communities as well. And then just on a bigger program schedule, Backing Small Business, Small Businesses Program, Main Street America, in partnership with American Express, is offering Backing Small Businesses Grant Program, which supports economically vulnerable and under-resourced small businesses within communities' reach. This year, eligible small business owners can apply for $10,000 grants for projects that grow or improve their businesses by building communities, supporting their economic viability, or bolstering meaningful change. Applications will be accepted from 9 a.m. from March 14th, and it's ending on April 7th. And they will close as soon as they hit 5,000. So please check that out. You can contact my office for more information. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, yes, congratulations to Commissioner Lambert on her resounding victory, and also to the Commissioners who were reelected without opposition. And we'll talk about that more at the swearing-in, which is going to be on Thursday, April 11th at 5:00 p.m. right here in City Commission chambers. I did want to give some updates about Lake Magonia Apartments. Commissioners, I'm sure you recall that some recent city commission meetings, residents have spoken to express their concerns about the apartments on Australian Avenue. And I want those residents to know that we did hear you, and we have taken some actions in direct response. The management team of Lake Magonia met with Police Chief Adderley, and they spent some time walking around the site and discussing the challenges. And so the management team, who seems earnest about rectifying the problems there, and the police department are working together to provide additional security services. New security cameras will be in place within the very, very near future. And to strengthen the relationships between the police department and the community, there will be a community partner day over at the apartments on Tuesday, April 23rd. And I know they've had some other community events there. Somebody say, "Well, why are you having community events in the area with all these problems?" Because it is important that the people who are law-abiding, no matter where they live, feel that the police are their allies and not their adversaries. We can't let the bad guys control the narrative. So we hope that those measures will help address the aforementioned concerns. There's also been a lot of conversation about PAL, and yes, we, as a city, as city administration, city administrator under my direction, have reached out to PAL. But it's important to know PAL is a separate 501(c)(3) organization. That is not the city, and we can't just take over PAL. So we've reached out to the board, and we've asked them some very pointed questions about what they feel their future is. We do control the building. We've had a lease with PAL, and so we may have to do some things with the building. But the organization itself is not a city department. It is a separate 501(c)(3), and so we've reached out to them and tried to encourage them to get their act together. And so we'll keep you posted as to how those conversations are going. On this Saturday, yeah, this Saturday, in partnership with the Cox Science Center and Aquarium, there will be the 11th Annual E4 Life, Green, Health, and Wellness Expo. That'll take place at the Cox Science Center between the hours of 10 to 4. There will be environmental workshops, giveaways, fun, exhibitions, and more. West Palm Beach residents and city of West Palm Beach employees receive a 50% discount to the Science Center with a valid ID. Visit the city's website for complete details. I'm also excited to announce a new city TV show called Your West Palm Beach, which is on TV-18. It's a short and upbeat news magazine show highlighting the people, places, and events that make our city such an exciting place to live, work, and play. There are two new episodes up on Channel 18 on Comcast, Hot and War Channel 99, as well as on our website and social media sites. And I have to give kudos to the Communications Department. This is something I don't think we've ever done. But check them out. They're really, really quite innovative, and I'm proud of the work that Diane and her team are doing. Speaking of the work of the Communications Department, I know many of you were at the boat show. While I was at the boat show, one of the owners of Schrader Mattress approached me to let me know how impressed he was with the professionalism and quality of TV-18 crew. They did a, an episode of Why West Palm Beach on Schrader Mattress, which is a company that's been here for decades. And he has said that as a result of just that episode, they've received numerous calls from people who didn't even know they existed, and they've secured four brand-new jobs as a result of the show. So it's a two-way street. I mean, we have these wonderful businesses. We do what we can to highlight them. But again, it's just an example of how the community is working together. So join Palm Beach County for Operation Greenlight, which is between April 8th and 12th, as they help get the county back, community back on the road. So the, this is an event that's sponsored by the Clerk of the Courts, and it's a special event which waives collection agency fees for those who are paying overdue fines in full. And it offers them a chance to save some money and get their driving privileges restored. So for a limited period of time, between April 8th and 12th, if people have had their license suspended because of unpaid fines or fees, they'll be able to pay those overdue fines in full without having to pay the late charges. So spread the word. And that is all I have. So thank you very much, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your week. This meeting is adjourned.